At 6:00 PM, we had a work session to discuss proposed Moayak wastewater system. At this time, I'd ask everyone to please stand for the invocation and pledge of allegiance to be led by Pastor Glenn McCrane.
Let us pray. Oh God, amid a world of confusing and conflicting issues, which we are confronted in our daily lives, we seek answers, we seek for clarification, we seek for a pure peace in a time of solitude. We come now in a brief moment of self-reflection and prayer, to be surrounded by a holy stillness, which brings hope and renewed faith in your creation. In this holy moment and prayer, we include our neighbors, people of our beloved Currituck County, and our elected leaders. Restill upon our commissioners tonight, the wisdom of Solomon, the patience of Job, and the holy love of Jesus. As they debate, discuss, and deliberate the multitude of issues before them, we pray their first priorities will be for the betterment of our county and fulfillment of its people's potential. Bless them, guide them, grant them patience. May neither people always be aware of the needs of our neighbors in these troubling and stressful times. May our eyes be guided by what is best for others, rather than what is always best for us. In these things, we pray, and all God's people say, "Amen."
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Pastor McCrane. Item one is approval of agenda. We do have some modifications. We're going to delete item four, as Deputy Smith could not be here tonight. We are going to delete item 10, and we're going to add item 10A, appointment to the Fire and E.O.M.S. Board. We're going to delete item three from the consent agenda. And with that, I would ask for a motion of approval from the board.
Sub move, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Have a motion, a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Agenda is adopted. Item two is public comment. I have... No one signed up for public comment. I have a couple of people signed up for different agenda items. If anyone would like to speak during the public comment period, now's the time to come forward. Seeing none, I'll close public comment. Item three is recognition of David Coelho and Travis Kemp. And I believe Mr. Wooton, Mark Wooton, who is the automotive instructor at Currituck School, is here with them tonight, and I'd like for the board to go down and make this presentation. I'm going to read these plaques for the recognition, then I'm going to let you explain a little bit about what's going on.
Yes, sir.
Tell us a little bit about the program, and then we'll get up here and let the press or whoever wants to take a picture. Okay? So, this is a recognition of David Coelho and Travis Kemp, whereas Universal Technical Institute is the parent company to the NASCAR Technical Institute in Mooresville, North Carolina, and whereas this prestigious school graduates 12,000 students each year, and whereas 80% of their students take their scholarship test each year, and whereas each year, the top-scoring student is recognized and given a major scholarship to attend this prestigious technical school, and whereas this year, the top-scoring students are from Currituck County High School. Whereas Mr. Mark Wooton, instructor of automotive technologies at Currituck County High School, is proud to announce that these two students from his 2010 Level III auto shop class are David Coelho and Travis Kemp. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Currituck County Board of Commissioners would like to express its pride in and congratulations to David and Travis for their unprecedented accomplishments. We wish them well and their future with NASCAR. And we adopted this back in June, but I think y'all missed a memo, so we're going to hand them out today here in August. And you two gentlemen, if you have anything, they're both the same. Come up here, will be a good spot for a picture, and Mr. Wooton can talk a little bit about what y'all did.
You can even picture as well.
Yeah, you come on up here.
I don't want to take away from the picture.
All right, Mr. Wooton, tell us about... Mr. Wooton has been teaching the automotive class. I'll tell you a quick, little personal thing. I've got a nephew that went through Mr. Wooton's class out at the high school, and now he is an ASA-certified autotech.
He is one of the most decorated, holds the highest number of certifications on the Eastern Seaboard for General Motors Dealership.
And he works at the...
He works at Colonial Cadillac in, I guess it's officially Norfolk.
And his class sure meant a lot, because not everyone goes to college, and the classes that him and other teachers teach are very important to our young people, and I just want to congratulate y'all and tell you how important it is. Now you can...
I have to tell you, first off, I feel very blessed to be part of this community and able to do this with these students. I consider it not a class, but a culture and a lifestyle, and these gentlemen speak volumes. The recognition they received tonight, NASCAR School is considered in our field to be the Harvard or the Yale of any technical school, and like you said earlier, 12,000 students graduate from that school every year. And we were blessed this year, not only to be recognized for the top score for their scholarship exam, but the top two scores. So first and second place are up here. The only thing I won't tell, I don't really want to know, I haven't asked, is which one got first and which one got second. But I will tell you that first and second place are both right here, and these boys were an absolute blessing to me in school these last three years, and they're absolutely gifted, just like your nephew. So I expect to hear very, very good things from these young men in the future, and thank you for recognizing them.
Give them another hand.
Mark, I was glad to hear you say that the one you trained is traveling all up and down the coast, working on these General Motors products, because Ford just don't have had as many breakdowns, no way. So you trained for the right folks.
All right. Thanks, everyone. Item four is recognition of Fred Smith. We continued that. And item five is action on Moayak wastewater. Mr. Scanlon, you have anything you'd like to add to our work session?
No, sir, unless the board has specific questions. I think we've met several times and been discussing this project over the last probably two or three years. I know it's a challenging and very difficult decision, it's in front of the Board of Commissioners, but I think that as we presented to you, we can make either one of these options work. We can operate them efficiently and effectively, and we are stand by to answer any questions that you might have.
Is the engineer present? Did he sneak out?
He's in the back row.
Could you come forward, Mr. Weatherly? For the record, could you tell the board your recommendation?
As Dan said, I think both of them have viable options, but from my standpoint, the standalone system, I think, would be the best alternative.
Okay, Mr. Scanlon?
I would concur with that recommendation.
Mr. McCree?
From a legal... Well, from a legal perspective, at least in terms of the agreements that would be necessary, there are a number of several agreements that would be necessary in order for the county to acquire and then go into operating a wastewater treatment plant at Eagle Creek. So from that alone, obviously, a county going to a brand-new site would not require that level of agreement or work, but that again is not to say that either one won't work equally as well, but of course Eagle Creek's going to be contingent upon getting some legal agreements in place.
All right. Anyone having commissioners' questions of Mr. Weatherly or Mr. Scanlon or Ms. McCree? Mr. McCree?
Sorry.
Hearing none, it's time to take action. Ms. Taylor?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would like to move to direct county staff to proceed with contracts for acquisition of land permitting construction of a county wastewater treatment plant and disposal facility within the Moayak Township.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, and further discussion. Now's the time to discuss if you've got anything to add.
I'd like to make a couple comments, pardon, Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Yes, sir.
We have tediously negotiated and examined this entire process, and it really boils down to a question of what's the most expedient thing to do for the good of, actually, all of Currituck County, but especially the Moayak area. The alternatives presented, the county option of building a brand-new plant, is going to be somewhat more expensive initially, but looking at what the needs of the county are from the standpoint of being able to represent Currituck in the best light to entities who may want to come here and develop commercially, that investment may in fact be well worth it. We just want to make sure that you understand that the factors and limitations being put on us, year after year, by particularly the EPA, but also the Department of Water Quality for the state of North Carolina, are going to make wastewater disposal more and more expensive every year. It's just going to happen. We have no control over that. So the most expensive initial system may in fact be the best overall system. We have no way of actually projecting what kind of commercial demand's going to be, who may sign up for it once the costs are told on what it's going to be, but our decision has to be based on the factors that we know and what we feel like we can do and what we think will do the best for the county.
Anyone else?
One question, if I may.
Yes, sir.
This is a user-pay system. It will not be dependent on general fund of Currituck County for its construction or operation.
That's correct, as all of our enterprise systems are.
Anything else? I would ask you to please cut your phones off, please.
A little catchy tune, though.
Hearing no further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item six, action on PB-87-56 Monterey Shores, PUD, request for a major amendment of special use permit to designate 1.1 acres identified as general business to Outer Banks Standard Residential, R01, within the PUD. Mr. McCree?
Mr. Chairman, this matter was before you originally, upon application of property owner Corolla Worship Center in Corolla, seeking to have what was designated commercial allocation removed from its property and for that designation within the PUD to be returned to residential. Of course, as you may recall, at that public hearing, there was a contracting purchaser of that property, LG Holdings, I believe it was, LLC, who also participated in that hearing before you that evening, and during the course of that hearing, you will remember you heard information, testimony, and argument that there was a pending lawsuit between LG Holdings, the contract purchased, the entity that had contracted to purchase the property from Corolla Worship Center, and Corolla Worship Center, and that a hearing was going to be held on June 28th in Currituck County Superior Court, I'm not sure it was held in this county or not, to determine whether a certain settlement agreement and its terms and conditions should be enforced. Subsequent to that, in conversation, and I have also received correspondence and a copy of the deed from the attorney for LG Holdings, the court ruled in favor of LG Holdings, required Corolla Worship Center, who is the applicant on this matter, to convey the property as set forth in the settlement agreement and their contract, which included that commercial allocation designation as well. So this matter is now before you for your ultimate determination as to whether you're going to grant or deny this permit. Again, the original applicant no longer is owner of this piece of property.
All right. Now, Mr. McCree, this is for action only tonight, so there won't be a public hearing, but I do understand that the applicant's attorney is here tonight.
The property owner's attorney, which Kraus Gray is here, and I think he's prepared to say anything if you'd like to hear anything about now the property owner's position with regard to this particular item, although as you might surmise, they, as they presented to you that night, would seek denial, as they are now the property owner, and of course would want to maintain the commercial allocation which they have now acquired.
Does anyone have any questions? Mr. McCree?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Is the litigation over with now? Is it done?
The litigation, well, I would say the litigation, as I understand it, between LG Holdings and Corolla Worship Center is over. Again, the court have an order that the property be conveyed in the condition in which it existed and with that allocation of commercial designation as well. And I am of an understanding that there is another lawsuit now that has been filed by another party, Mr. DeGabriel, against LG Holdings, seeking to have the court declare who is the owner, as I understand it, who is the owner of the commercial allocation. But that again is not a matter related specifically to this particular piece of property, at least with regard to its ownership.
So the original applicant is no longer half-standing in this other than a third-party request theoretically.
That's correct. That's correct.
Any other questions? Hearing none, need an action? Have a motion?
I'm going to make a motion that we deny the request.
Second.
Have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No. Motion carries. Item seven is public hearing and action, PB-06, Robert F. London Incorporated pursuant to order of Currituck County Superior Court, rehearing of the application of Robert F. London Incorporated for special use permit for an adult-oriented nightclub at 9098 Keritoke Highway, Point Harbor, Papa Branch Township, partial identification number 0132-000-133A-0000. Mr. McCree, before we start this, how did this get back on our agenda?
Well, Mr. Chairman, this matter, of course, was considered by the Board of Commissioners in May of 2000, upon this special use application by RF or Robert F. London Incorporated. At that time, the Board of Commissioners, after hearing the matter, denied the special use permit. It then was appealed in the nature of a writ of certiorari, it's called legally, but it was an appeal from you sitting as a court to the Superior Court, which sits as an appellate court in these matters and reviews the record. In 2006, the court ultimately made a determination that appears to me that the record was deficient and that there was not a verbatim transcript available for the court to be able to review and make a determination as to whether the county commissioners had properly applied the law as it related to this particular issue and had made a proper decision, and so the court then ordered that the matter be remanded back to this board for rehearing. And that now is why this matter is before you tonight, because of a court order from a Superior Court sitting as an appellate court, determining that there was insufficient ability in the record for the court to make a determination about what happened and want you to do it again, basically. So that's why it's back before you, not because you necessarily have requested that, but because the court has ordered you to do it. Now, before you enter into the matter, my understanding is that Mr. Brian Plumley, who's the attorney representing the applicant, Robert F. London Incorporated, may have a motion that he would want the board to consider before you proceed any further into this matter.
Be proper. Come forward, please. Give us your name.
Good evening. My name is Brian Plumley, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I represent Robert F. London in this application matter. Mr. McCree is correct, this was ordered back to the board for its consideration. I have a request for a continuance. This was an order that came about in the year 2006. The board, by majority vote in December of 2006, voted to dismiss the lawsuits against mermaids at that time, and there was no enforcement action. Mermaids continue to operate for the next four years. We filed, after the county filed violation notices upon Mr. London for operating, we filed a motion with the court. Then this was noticed up, I think around August 5th, for a hearing before the board. We've not had a proper opportunity to gather witnesses, experts, so that we can make a full presentation to the board, and so I'm requesting a continuance for at least 60 days so that we may gather the necessary evidence that we need to make a proper record for the board's consideration. I have other objections to the hearing, but I'll preserve those. I'm just, at this point, making a motion for a continuance for your consideration. Thank you.
Sixty days, Mark.
Well, it's within your discretion, again, as a quasi-judicial body, to make a determination as to whether it would be 60 days or some less or some longer period of time.
Thirty.
So it's an appropriate request, and our legal counsel has no problem with that request?
I think certainly a continuous request, given this is the first one, is not unreasonable. Now, whether 60 days is a longer period of time that might be necessary in order for a party to prepare for this matter is a different issue, but I leave that to your discretion to make a determination as to whether 60 days is...
There's a difference, 45.
Longer.
All right. I guess it's appropriate if the board would like a motion to continue at this time?
On the calendar, how do those days fall with our regular meetings?
Be the first meeting in November. I'll be giving the 60 would be the first meeting in November.
Either it'll fall on the October 18th meeting, which would be your second meeting in October, or your first meeting in November, which would be November 1st.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move to go to October, the 18th meeting.
I'll second that.
Have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No. Motion carries. Item eight, public hearing on closeout of fiscal year 2002 Community Development Block Grant Scattered Site Grant Program. Mr. Scanlon?
Mr. Chairman, you have in your agenda package the closeout documents. We have now finally completed the seven projects that were associated with the 2002 CDBG project. That consisted of six replacement homes and one rehab. The 2002 grant was a $400,000 grant. We have drawn down all but $4,000 of that. It is our position now that we have completed all the projects associated with that. As part of the state closeout, we are required to have a public hearing as well as file certain financial documents with the state. When all that is in their presence, they will make a final determination to move forward to close the grant out. Once it's closed out, then we can go ahead and immediately start moving forward with an additional $400,000 for the next series of CDBG programs.
Wait a moment before I open the public hearing.
A lot of mermaid's customers here tonight.
Where'd everybody go?
Okay, at this time, I'd like to open...
Everybody move forward.
I'm glad you didn't leave, Eric.
Where's Peter?
Should he answer that, Barry? Should he answer that?
At this time, I'd like to open the public hearing. I have no one who has signed up for the public hearing. Is there anyone that wishes to speak that did not get a chance to sign up? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and ask the board for a vote.
And this would simply be for us to move forward with submitting the closeout documents to the state.
Motion made to close out.
Second.
Motion, a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No. Item nine is consideration of ordinance prohibiting metal detectors on county property. Would that be Mr. McCree?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. As set forth in the memorandum from me attached to the proposed ordinance, this came about as a result of Wellhead Preservation Trust being concerned by the use of metal detectors on the Wellhead Club property, and in particular, the potential loss of historical artifacts. In further discussion with the leadership of that organization, it was my suggestion, as I set forth in the memorandum, that the same type of ordinance probably should rightfully apply to all county property, in that that property and anything that's on that property is owned by the public and the people of Currituck County. So before you tonight is this proposed ordinance that would just very plainly prohibit any person from carrying or using a metal detector, probe, or similar instrument used for remotely sensing the presence of objects or features out of below ground level.
And this is on all county-owned property, not just the Wellhead Club?
That's correct. The section of the ordinance is being amended, well, in fact, the title of it prohibits it on all county property.
Are there any exceptions to this? Can somebody apply for permission to...
There would not be any exceptions on county property.
I have a problem with that. It sounds to me like it's overreaching on the part of the Wellhead Club board.
Well, I discussed it with one of them. I had the same questions, and I was told that what's happening is, is people are going out on the Wellhead grounds, metal detecting, and they're still doing archaeology study out there, trying to find objects and building footprints and different things, and they got people literally removing things from the grounds. That's what brought this forward.
And it would certainly apply, for example, here to our, well, these are historic grounds and the historic jail, for example, prohibits someone from coming over here on a weekend with a metal detector and digging up anything that they might find, but again, rightfully belongs to the county.
But the county is the people.
I'm sorry?
But the county is the people, and they don't limit it on the beach. People can do that. I see people doing it on school grounds all the time. I think we need to be very careful here.
I can understand there being some restrictions in areas that may be delineated as under examination for historical significance and may be permission granted in certain circumstances for doing that, but a carte blanche prohibition against it, I think is just overreaching for that. I'm one of those people that, you know, uncertain to some degree as to the historical significance of some of these establishments anyway, but we won't get into that tonight.
I guess the question is, Mr. Roy, would you want somebody to come in your yard and do it? It's okay for them?
Well, my yard doesn't belong to the public. This site does belong to the public.
Well, we're held in the public's trust of this county, though.
I understand.
We're the keepers of the school property and the county property and not the beachfront.
The problem comes in is Mr. Etheridge brought up that this is county property, it's owned by the people, but the person that digs up something of historical significance is not necessarily giving it to the county. They are taking it as their own personal property. So therefore, it is no longer county property when they're taking it and using it on theirselves and for themselves. You see it on eBay or wherever. You see it on eBay or wherever, selling something of historical significance for the county. So I understand why the Whalehead grounds and some areas like this around the jail, you can't have people out here with metal detectors just digging up things that could be of significance. I mean, you've got to look at it from that standpoint.
I don't know of any major battlefields, federal properties, or any of those that prohibit on a carte blanche basis like this. Simple fact is, Currituck County is filled with historical sites, many of which have not been delineated or explored properly. When you talk about areas like Shingle Landing, the older sections of Moyoc, the ferry landing down here where the piers were, Fisher's Landing down there, there's so many sites that really probably have artifacts that could be developed. To make a prohibition like this on all county properties would just bring that exploration to a halt. And frankly, I don't believe the Whalehead Trust or any of the other county facilities has the ability to get out and do that itself. If it were not for these individuals out there doing it, none of these artifacts would be turned up. I guess I just don't have as pessimistic a view of the altruism of the people doing it as, you know, possible, and maybe I'm a little gullible along that line, but, you know, the fact is, I think these people looking for these things probably, by and large, are doing it from the standpoint of historical interest, not because it's profitable to them.
Well, one thing that happens on the Whalehead Club, nothing gets turned in, and that's what brought this thing up. I mean, there have been some things that have been found, people knew they were found, and it never got turned in. It walked off. And I tend to agree with the Whalehead Board on this one, and my vote will reflect that.
I don't necessarily have any problem with the Whalehead grounds or developing some type of permit system that's a license that somebody go out there and do it and look at it that way, but just a broad brush, I do have some problems with that.
I agree with that. I think that's really the approach we should take, is have them apply for a permit to go out and do that, get permission from the Whalehead Trust, and have it done under some kind of supervision so that they know if something is found, it's their duty to turn it over to the curator there, whoever's in charge of the artifacts with the Whalehead Club.
Who's going to supervise it?
Well, I don't know.
Who are you going to hire to start supervising historical sites and metal detectors?
At 3:00 in the morning, we're going to call a deputy every time somebody's out there doing it, anyway.
If they get caught, they will.
Well, it's a problem we have up there now with overly zealous enforcement of some of the things that are making a drain on the Sheriff's Department. I just don't see the extent of the issue here. There may be some very, very valuable artifacts up there, but most of what's found are nails, pieces of metal from this, that, and the other construction. And I don't see a great, a lot of exhibition of that kind of material up there at the Whalehead Club.
Well, the original request was for the Whalehead Club, and that was it. And they sent the request forward, and then it got changed to all county facilities.
Mr. McCree, couldn't we just simply put a sign there stating that removal of artifacts from this site, and whether you got to put it at the Whalehead Club or the school sites or wherever, is prohibited, and anybody that violates that is trespassing?
Certainly, you have the authority to regulate the use and access to county property. I think, though, if you want to actually have it so that it can be enforced, you would need to adopt an ordinance to that.
You'd have to have what we've got here.
I would go along with that. I think that's an excellent idea, if we actually posted it was prohibited to remove materials and let people search, but just have an ordinance saying that, you know, if you do remove something here and you know it's against that, then you're penalized to the extent of the law.
Is that they're going to tell you when they find something valuable?
Well, Gene, I just don't know. You know, I'm not sure, honestly, that there is anything valuable at the Whalehead Club.
Could be.
I think all of it's in somebody's garage that removed it years ago, and I won't mention many names.
I would note, this language does come from North Carolina State Parks Rules and Regulations. It's only saying North Carolina doesn't allow this on any state park.
All right, any further discussion? Hearing none. If this passes unanimous, it's adopted. If not, it comes back at the next meeting for a second vote.
That's correct.
All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign?
No.
Motion carries. Be back at our next meeting. Item 10A, Appointment to the Fire and EMS Board. Mr. Nelms, this is your appointment.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to appoint Mr. Charles Berry of Grandy to the Fire and EMS Advisory Board. Mr. Chairman?
All right. We have an applicant. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign? Motion carries. Item 11 is Consent Agenda.
It's a move.
A motion for approval?
Second.
Second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign? Item 12 is Commissioner's Report. Ms. Taylor?
As usual, September 11th will be the Moyoc Volunteer Fire Department's breakfast with a lot of extras since it does fall on September 11th. Urge everybody to come to that. Also, this week, a lot of progress has been made in front of the Moyoc Baptist Church. I called Mr. Jerry Jennings personally when they started the work to tell him thank you and please send that along to whoever was out there. The trees are down, the bushes are down, and now if we can just get them to come back and cut the grass, and then we've, the grass is not too high, not too high on the railroad side, but a letter has been issued to them. They have till the 9th to respond, and from there, we will take it over and charge the railroad company for that. But I do appreciate that being done. It looks much, much better.
It does look better.
Mr. Gregory?
Mr. Chairman, I had a couple of people approach me this week that, you know, Lake calls me, how come we'd be talking about it? I like the calls me to be late getting to a funeral down at the other side of Gravediggers the other day. If you notice how this traffic is backed all the way up?
The coin jock.
All the way to coin jock. And, you know, somebody said, why don't this DOT come in and simply put a 400 or 500-foot turnoff lane and put signage, put the correct signage before you get to that turnoff lane, said, "All gravedigger traffic, take the right, take the right lane." You know, I've seen it done other places, and, you know, and they said you could do that there, and you could do that at farm markets, and maybe places that you had a backup. And the more I think about it, the more sense it makes. I'd like to see us approach DOT and suggest something like that to them, because I've seen it a lot of other places, and it works. And it would certainly help, because Gravedigger has become one congested place down there on the weekends.
Yes, it has.
It really has. And I think a 400, 500-foot feeder lane in there would certainly help.
Well, it was congested. I've gone up the last two Sundays, left at 9:00 in the morning and come back in the traffic at the height of the traffic. The traffic is congested at 168 before you get to the county line due to the light at the welcome center and people turning in to the restaurant. Then it picks up and goes on through until you get to the Mars Farm Market, and then it backs up there. And then you've got the stoplight, of course, and then it also, as you said, at Dennis Anderson's and then the stoplight at Grandy. And from there on, we've been packed because people cannot get from Jarvisburg to the bridge. And I've heard people tell me three and a half to four hours. And I don't know what the remedy to that is, that million-dollar light system they've got in Derrick County, I guess, that there's just nowhere for the people to go.
Well, there's something needs to be done with those stoplights.
Yeah.
I mean, I don't, maybe we need to ask DOT to look at studying it before another summer because the phasing of those lights are not right. Because you can tell when traffic moves. I've been called in at two Saturdays going down.
And I've been told those lights were phased, but I would agree with you that maybe they're a little out of phase.
Well, maybe they need to delay them, just like they delay them in Moyoc. They don't delay the ones down there, I don't think. There's no signage that says, you might sit here five minutes before the light changes.
Think they're going to delay a stoplight in Derrick County, son?
Nothing do but ask. All they can say is no.
They're doing a good job. I'm surprised with the one on Papa Branch Road, because that one is about seven to eight minutes.
Yes, it is.
And they do, and that does the best thing that it could do, because if it ran it through any quicker, then that line would be from Jarvisburg all the way back to Grandy. And sometimes it is that deep. It's just we've had a tremendous amount of increase in traffic, which has been good for the economy.
Would you like to send a letter?
Send a letter to DOT and just tell them to look at that, because it would certainly help, it really would.
Can you make that so, Mr. Scanlon? And then make sure we all get a copy of it?
Yes, sir.
And if it weren't for those stoplights, the poor people that live here in Currituck wouldn't ever get out on the highway.
No, they wouldn't. It's been really bad.
Mr. Nelms, you have anything?
Yes, I'd like to let everybody know, we had a real nice moving ceremony in Grandy at Walid Island this past week. Senior Chief Roy Flowers from Moyoc retired after 27 years of service to the U.S. Navy. He was an instructor in terrorism, and we were very moved. He had about 200 people during the ceremony. We were blessed and having a real, real nice day. I would also like to welcome everybody to the 10th Annual Outta Banks Bike Show, which will be held Labor Day weekend. And this is an event that I've been sponsoring for years, and it benefits Victory Junction Gang Camp, which is a camp for terminally ill children in Random in North Carolina. And if you've never been to that camp, it's a camp where kids come and spend two weeks with their doctors and their nurses, and the idea is to get the children away from the fact that they're sick and they live in like a Disneyland. The land was donated by King Richard Petty and is given in memory of his grandson, who perished years ago.
Mr. Etheridge?
It's come to my attention that we have not appointed a delegate to the North Carolina Association County Commissioners' Annual Meeting that will be next week.
I move to nominate Commissioner Etheridge.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, aye.
This will get him out of town. Go aye.
Okay. What else?
That's it. Gene brought up about the traffic and the lights. I'd like to get with DOT about phasing those lights down or delaying something.
Yeah, we're going to work on that. Ms. Rohr?
I had just one announcement I wanted to let everybody know about. One of my favorite groups, Currituck Kids, local charity group, in case you're not familiar with it, based mostly over on Bales Island, is having another breakfast September 26th. That's Sunday morning, 8:30 to 10:30 at the Bales Island Clubhouse. Y'all be sure and come over there. It is wonderful, and I and some of the other commissioners hopefully may be serving. I know some of the candidates will, so I hope we'll see you over there. It's a great breakfast. You'll have a good time. You'll get to meet a lot of nice folks, and you'll be helping a lot of the kids here in Currituck.
Where is it and what time?
Bales Island Clubhouse, Sunday, September 26th, 8:30 to 10:30.
Okay. Mr. Idlet?
Yes, sir. Since we're writing letters, Mr. Scanlon, without objection from anyone else on the board, I would like for you to send a letter to the Wildlife Resources Commission folks. Let them know that the boat ramp at Brumley Landing at Knott's Island has filled in tremendously, and when the tide is low, you can hardly get a boat out of there at all now.
Anything else? I have nothing to report, other than Mr. Scanlon will be meeting with the, look, he perked right up when I said that, didn't he? That Mr. Scanlon will be... First night speaking. Mr. Scanlon will be meeting with members of the Community Foundation from Almaral Health. Is it next Monday?
Almaral Hospital, next Monday.
Yes. Well, they changed their name to Almaral Health. But anyways, he'll be meeting with those to see about providing some free services into Currituck County through the foundation. They do things such as stroke clinics, blood pressure, diabetes. They've been doing those over in Pasquetank, and I've asked for them to start coming into Currituck County. So he's going to be looking to see if we can do something in different areas in the county this coming year, because they're getting ready to formulate their budgets and their projects for the year. And that's at no cost to anyone when they do these clinics. They're free to people who don't have access to health care and doctors, well, everyone has access to through the hospital, but to help some of those that maybe need to have their blood pressure or stroke risk taken. So he'll be meeting with that group this week. And with that, Mr.?
One other thing.
Yes, sir?
Since you mentioned that, I would like to give some kudos to the Corova Beach Volunteer Fire Department. They have been doing the same type of thing. They're going to do it on an annual basis, doing like a health screening.
Yes.
They even identified a couple of folks who had some pretty serious ailments that they were not aware of. They were able to document it and let them know about it, and as a matter of fact, one of them had an incident or got sick sometime shortly thereafter, and they were able to do things that needed to be done to save that person's life. So just good job to them.
All right. Mr. Scanlon, you have anything to report?
Nothing tonight, sir.
Okay. Item 14 is a closed session according to GS 143-318.113 to consult with attorney in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege.
Can we recess this and do the Tourism Authority and then go into closed session?
That certainly would be appropriate for me. Just make a motion to make it so.
I'll make a motion that we recess this meeting to then convene as the Tourism Development Authority, and then we'll adjourn that and reconvene as commissioners and go into closed session.
I would like to recognize Mr. Scanlon at this time.
Mr. Chairman, you have in your agenda package a proposed policy amendment. This was presented to your Tourism Advisory Board. They unanimously supported it since it's in front of you tonight. It does a couple of things. One is, it takes several different policies and combines it and consolidates it into a single document. But more importantly, it provides staff direction on how to handle, unfortunately, over the last couple of years, we periodically will get complaints against a particular business, and this will give staff direction and a policy on how to continue to promote various businesses when we have an issue or a health department issue where a complaint comes against. So it gives staff direction on how to move forward and address those. And I'll be happy to go into more detail and answer any questions that you might have.
Anyone have any questions? I will tell you that I sat on the Tourism Advisory Board as your commissioner, and this was something that we've been working on for, I don't know, a couple of months. I think staff met with Mr. McCree to get the language in order so that it consolidates several policies down into one, and the Tourism Advisory Board voted unanimously to bring this forward to the Board of Commissioners.
So that's your motion?
So motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Then we have a budget amendment. Mr. Scanlon?
Yes, sir. You have a budget amendment. The copy machine in the Moyoc Visitor Center stopped working, and it was not budgeted in the budget, so we are asking for a budget amendment to appropriate funds to replace that.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign? Now, we need a motion to adjourn from the Tourism Development Authority meeting, reconvene as a Board of Commissioners, and then go into closed session.
Move to reconvene.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign?
We want to add for closed session also, Mr. Chairman, pursuant to 143-318.11A6, to instruct staff regarding the possible acquisition of property owned by Diane Owens, 114 Gabbard Lane.
Yes, sir.